All right, so it looks like we have everyone now. We're good to go, Ms. Maloney?
I'm Sonya. Are we all set to go?
Yes, we're ready.
All right. Well, hello, everybody, and welcome to the October 20th, 2021 Los Manos City Council Meeting. I have to read some things here regarding the virtual environment. The City Hall Council Chambers remain closed to the public. In accordance with Assembly Bill 361, all members of the City Council and City Staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. The following alternatives are available to members of the public who wish to watch the meeting and/or provide comment to the City Council before and during the meeting: audio/video broadcast. This City Council meeting can be accessed in real time from your computer, your tablet, or your smartphone at the following links: You can watch it on cable Comcast Channel 96. You can watch it on the city's YouTube channel. And you can join and participate in the Zoom meeting at the city's website. There are the links there, be it Zoom or by phone. We have dial-in locations, number of dial-in numbers. In order to comment during a public meeting, the comments will be taken at the time of each eligible agenda item. If you would like to submit written comments, please submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@losbanas.org, or drop them off in hard copy at City Hall 520 J Street. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant, to comment by Zoom Video Conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, to comment by phone, call on one of the above listed numbers. Be prompted to raise your hand by pressing *9 to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. Then press *6 to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Important things to remember during your public comment period: All attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Number two, please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you are interested in is called and public speakers are invited to raise their hands, raise yours then, and we will call them all in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. With that, we will go to invite Pastor Steve Hammond from Bethel Community Church to deliver our invocation. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember staff. Please bow your hands for word. Father, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening and to lift up our city and our leaders before you in prayer. We pray your blessing upon them as they continue to strive to lead us in difficult and challenging times. I pray that you would give them wisdom, direction, guidance, and strength. I ask your blessing upon them as they continue to move us forward and continue to make best decisions possible for every citizen in Los Manos. I pray that you would bless the proceedings tonight and that everything discussed would be, would come to a a great resolution and that, Father, you would glorify it all the time. We ask your blessing on Los Manos and upon us today. We ask the same to Jesus. Amen. Kind of lost your feet there a little bit faster. Thank you very much. And now we will go to the item one, and we will call the meeting to order at 6:09 PM. We will ask Police Chief Breezy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Maloney.
Jones.
Present.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Lamis.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
We have a quorum. We will now go to item four: Consideration and Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor for Tim Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert, to approve the agenda as submitted. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Next on our list are presentations. I have proclamation and a couple, and some certificates of recognition. First, we'll, Ms. Sherri Pearson. Here to receive, I believe, the proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Seroptimist International Organization. I see Joelle is here as well. Very good. Whereas the Seroptimist International Organization, founded on October 3rd, 1921, works to economically empower women and girls through access to education and is celebrating their bright past and brilliant future upon their 100th anniversary in October. And whereas the Los Manos Seroptimist Club was formed in 1962 as a part of Seroptimist International of the Americas. And whereas the Los Manos Seroptimist Club has improved the lives of Los Manos women and girls by providing local Live Your Dream grants, participating in Dream It, Be It Girls conferences, awarding local high school scholarships, and bringing awareness to domestic violence and sex trafficking prevention. And whereas dispersing three or more yearly Live Your Dream grants to local women helps get them, helps them get the education and training they need to improve their employment prospects and economic standing. And whereas holding quarterly Dream It, Be It events have put many local girls on the path toward achieving their educational and career goals. And whereas awarding many local scholarships to graduating high school students has helped them along their educational and career paths. Now, therefore, we proclaim that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Manos do hereby congratulate the Seroptimist International Organization on its 100th anniversary and celebrate the Los Manos Club for their many contributions to our community. And let's see, Mrs. Pearson is here. Would you like to say a few words?
There we are. Okay. Thank you so much for the recognition from the city for our wonderful Seroptimist organization. The 100th anniversary is quite a special event for us. We've been around a long time. And I'd like to also mention that our local Los Manos Club will celebrate their 60th anniversary next year in 2022. And those significant anniversaries represent us helping so many women and girls. I'm really proud of what we do in our community and that we do, most of our projects are local. And so we totally support our community. And thank you so much again for the recognition.
Thank you for all you do for our community. As a teacher, I have been a beneficiary of your, of the Seroptimist generosity to our school programs, and we appreciate it very much. And thank you for all your service, and thank you for all you do. And thank you for joining us tonight. I see the district director is here as well.
Yes, and also one of our members, Delia Salazar, is also here.
There.
She's one of our brand new members.
Oh.
And we're always welcoming new members. So if anybody desires to join, we just inducted two new members recently, and we're growing. So we welcome the women, women and men in our community to join. Thank you again.
You are very welcome. Have a great evening, and congratulations one more time. Tonight, I have two certificates of recognition for a father and son for many years of service. The first one is Dad. This is presented to Daryl Gargano in recognition of the dedication and commitment he has given to the Los Manos Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter over the last 43 years. He is congratulated on his retirement. Mr. Gargano, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for this and the City Council, and also it was a privilege and an honor to serve the city and the citizens of this fine community.
Thank you. And it's been an honor to have you service. You've done a great deal for a lot of people, Daryl. We appreciate it. Next, we'll, son, Brad Gargano, in recognition of the dedication and commitment he has given the Los Manos Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter over the last 26 years, he too is congratulated on his retirement. And the first time I met Brad was when I taught him in class back a couple of years back. Would you like to say a few words, Mr. Gargano, Jr., son, Brad? We had, there you are.
Yes, yes. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I want to thank you for the recognition. It's greatly appreciated. It was a privilege serving the community for the last 26 years. Thank you once again.
Thank you again for your service. And that congratulates all our presentation recipients tonight and move on to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken. I just, I just noticed a hand up, but Dean Moran's hand is up. Did I miss, did I miss, miss you over there, Dean Moran?
I think she's planning to speak during public forum.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. So I'll, I'll wait till I've read this, and then we can go there. All righty. We'll start again. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate and make comments are listed on pages one and two of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record and at the appropriate time during the City Council meeting. At this point, we will now open the public forum, and I'll get that over to the host to handle the hand raisings and things. And I see Dean Moran.
Mr. Mayor, I have one comment that I need to read by email.
Okay.
Would you rather go to Ms. Moran first?
Let's go to Ms. Moran first, since we've got her queued up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Hopefully you can hear me and really the community at large. I wanted to make sure that I came on here. You can probably see that I'm in my car, so from one meeting to the next, but I really wanted to make sure that I came here. This introduction is long overdue, so I wanted to formally introduce myself as the new dean of our Los Manos campus. So have been out here since March 1st, so a lot of good work since, since March 1st. Hopefully, and maybe in an upcoming meeting, we can agendize, you know, some of the great projects we're working on at the college, you know, potential partnerships, things of that sort. But two prongs to my quick public comment today. First, a formal introduction. For those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised in Los Manos, truly the, the, I feel like a broken record probably for, for some of other folks that belong to different clubs, or optimists, rhetarians. They probably heard my spiel before. The only time I left was to really go get an education, and I came back home. Los Manos is my, my hometown. I have been working for Mercer College for nine years in January, and now I have the great fortune, and I'm truly humbled to be coming officially back home to Los Manos as the dean of instruction for our Los Manos campus. And the second is to really welcome all of you and invite the whole community at large to help me celebrate our 50th anniversary. Been talking to some of the folks that have worked at the college. We have folks in the community that have dedicated their life to Mercer College. We want to make sure that they come out and celebrate with us. So it is scheduled for November 5th, and the afternoon event, it's a free event to the community, November 5th. We will make sure to have a canopy. Rain or shine, it is happening. We have fun carnival games. We have entertainment. We have music. We have information about Mercer College, and we really want to get your input. You know, we've been in the community for 50 years. How can we make it better? And how can we make another 15 prosperous years moving forward? So with that said, that invitation is open to not only Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the whole community, really. I want to make sure that gets the proper invite to our festival again, November 5th, 4 to 6 over at our Los Manos campus. If you don't know, Google me, Google Jessica Moran, Mercer College, Los Manos campus. You'll see my email there, phone number. Give me a call, send me an email. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Dean Moran. Nice to see you at the helm there. Thank you. And then next, we will go to Ms. Maloney, who has a written comment.
Hello, City Clerk Office. Please see attached letter. I would like for my letter to be read tonight in the Los Manos City Council meeting at 6:00 PM. Sincerely, Maria H. Vargas. And it's as follows: Dear councilmembers, I am writing to you in regards to the mandate for masks and the vaccines which are coming from the California Governor and the Biden Administration. As a citizen of this city, I am concerned on the policies that is trying to be pushed out on myself and my kids. I do not support masks in schools or out in the public venues. For those reasons mentioned here, quote, "The pores or opening sizes in the cloth and the surgical mask range from 80 to 500 microns, which is much larger than particular matter, and the nano-micro range such as nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, hydrogen cyanide, titanium dioxide, aluminum dioxide, carbon dioxide, bacteria or even bacterages or exominates, sometimes referred to the virus. Therefore, any of the cloth or surgical mask are useless, are useless and provide no possible protection," end quote. If the city, county, or state is so concerned about the health issues, then a full face gas mask should be implemented. I hear from the mainstream media, doctors on news channels, along with Dr. Fauci, that the vaccine is safe and effective. No need to worry. Please explain why the CDC is reporting millions of people having adverse events from vaccinations. See below data. I also have a letter from the CDC saying I also have a letter from the CDC saying, quote, "A search of our records failed to reveal any documents pertaining to your request, specifically National Center for Immunization and Respiratory Diseases, a crisis that CDC does not purify or isolate and COVID-nineteen virus in the manner of their request or describes," end quote. It is unacceptable to mandate a vaccine and push out this narrative. This should be my choice and my right to decide what is best for me. Having this vaccine is against my religious beliefs and everyone in the government is violating my kids and my constitutional rights and should not be dictating orders. I clearly understand this wasn't on tonight's agenda, but I want answers in regards to the mandates. And those are the only comments that I've received by email.
Thank you. And we see no other comments from the public nor hands raised. So at that, we will close the public forum and move on to the consideration of the approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And for that, we will go to Ms. Maloney to read our consent agenda for tonight.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. War numbers two-two-nine-one-three-five through two-two-nine-three-eight-two in the amount of nine hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. First quarter investment report for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year. Minutes for the October sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number six-four-zero-eight, awarding the bid for the purchase of two new two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two model medium-duty utility trucks with liftgate authorize, authorizes the Public Works Operations Manager to issue the purchase order to Mercer Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. City Council Resolution Number six-four-oh-nine, authorizing the mayor of Las Vanas to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Las Vanas and the Las Vanas Unified School District for emergency medical services provided by the city's fire department. City Council Resolution Number six-four-one-zero, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Las Vanas pursuant to provisions of A B three-sixty-one. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Go through council, see if any items, council, any council wishes to pull any items for either discussion or separate vote. Mr. Jones?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Can we, I'd like to pull item B just for discussion.
Item D for discussion. Okay. And Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item E for discussion in a separate vote.
E separate vote. Okay. And Mr. Yamas? Mr. Yamas, do we have you?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Um, let us go first to Ms. Lewis's item E, which will require a separate vote. And for that, we'll go to Fire Chief Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, thank you. Uh, this item, item E is regarding an M O U memorandum of understanding between the city of Las Vanas Fire Department as well as the Las Vanas Unified School District. Uh, for many years, the Las Vanas Fire Department has provided E M T coverage at the local football games. It's a, it's a, it's a service we've, we've helped them so they could have the games in a safe manner, uh, to assist with medical coverage. Uh, over the years, the, the school district has paid the Las Vanas Volunteer Fire Department a, uh, basically to about two hundred dollars a game. And those funds were used to help pay for E M T recertification and also, uh, just the, some of the additional costs for, for having, having the volunteers there. Due to, uh, just the challenges of, of life and, and E M Ts, uh, volunteers, E M Ts, voluntary E M Ts available, we still want to make sure that we have E N T coverage at these games to, uh, help the, the crowd as well as the participants at the event. So what we're doing to do is have a staff member or up to two staff member, fire department personnel, E M Ts assigned to each of the, each one of the football games to provide medical coverage for that. So this, uh, this item is basically an agreement between the district and the city of Las Vanas to make sure that we have full, uh, compensation coverage for having staff, um, attend these games, allowing on-duty personnel to still be able to respond to emergencies outside the, that have been in, within their district. If there are any other questions, um, I'm happy to answer those, but also, also as this, uh, this, uh, this agreement will be renewed or updated annually at this point. And if I, I can, uh, let each and every one of you know that if any changes of this needs to be addressed in regards to full burden cost or, uh, the expenses that we, we are incurring from this, we will address that in the annual, uh, uh, M O U and bring it to you, the council. Any questions?
Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Hurley. Um, and, and I just, uh, wanted to bring this forward because I, I spoke to the chief, uh, this afternoon, uh, to make sure that, uh, the compensation area was, uh, up to date with our current contract and that, uh, the firefighters in our department would be reimbursed based on, uh, current prices, uh, and salary. And in the report, it indicates that this, this particular memorandum of understanding runs through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. So that's for about a year and a half. Um, I'm sorry, uh, it'll be next year in June that it'll run through. The, um, the one request that I had made with the chief is that, uh, when the, uh, if, if it's going to be extended, um, with a, with the agreement, I'm not sure if it's going to be a new memorandum of understanding or just an extension of the agreement with new cost prices. Just to come back to council and make sure that council is aware of what the changes are. And, and that would be the additional request that I would make is that, um, under a new memorandum of understanding or if there is a renewal, uh, of mutual understanding that, uh, it just be brought back for informational purposes so that we know what's going on. And that's it. And with that, that would be the additional request that I would have a, added into the report for the language of the memorandum. Well, it doesn't have to be in the memorandum, but just in our report, uh, that, uh, the chief bring it back for information to the council. And I submit to it.
Okay. Would, uh, Ms. Lewis, would you like to make the motion to approve with your additions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, let me make sure I got the right page here. Uh, Resolution Number six-four-zero-nine, as submitted along with a request to have, uh, staff come back to council with any updates in the memorandum of understanding for future, uh, negotiation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll stick with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I have motion by Mayor for Tim's Lewis and a second by council member Lambert to approve city council resolution number six-four-zero-nine with the additional information as indicated by Ms. Lewis. Ms. Maloney, roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lomis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Now we will go to, um, item D for discussion. And for that, we go to Public Works Director Bauer Socks.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, I have with me tonight William Via, the Public Works Operations Manager, who will be, um, speaking to this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. So, uh, the item before you tonight is, uh, the award of the bid for two, uh, medium-duty utility trucks are basically three-quarter ton pickups with the utility body, um, uh, mounted on the back. Uh, one is for, um, streets, uh, to replace an, an older vehicle. I think it's a two thousand and seven with about a hundred thousand miles. And the other is to replace one in, in, um, water, uh, uh, a, uh, I don't have a year here, but it's got two hundred thousand miles. I think it's like a ninety-eight or a ninety-nine model Dodge, um, that we're replacing. And, uh, the, uh, the bid, um, that we wish to award tonight was not the lowest bid. However, the lowest bid, um, the timeline for the delivery of the vehicle was, um, going to go into next fiscal year. So it would create, uh, somewhat of a hardship because we would have to budget for it again for next year. And if it arrived early before, um, July first, then we would have to have them hold on to it. The, uh, second lowest bidder, which was Mercer Chevrolet, uh, but a total of about four hundred and eighty dollars per vehicle, uh, more. So that they can deliver within a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days and a hundred and eighty days is what we requested in the bid documents.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert? You're muted, Mr. Lambert.
Sorry about that. So I'll just, uh, just one question, uh, the one for Santos Ford, uh, what it said did not meet requirements. Put that, that you were requesting. I'll just, I, I just wanted to see if you could clarify the requirements that you had on that one where the reason why we didn't get, go with the, the.
What, what we requested was a hundred and eighty-day delivery and, um, their estimate was two hundred and seventy days, uh, which, which could have pushed up into next fiscal year. So that's why we went with the, with the next highest bid.
That's. That's, that's all I wanted to clarify. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Uh, with that, Cheryl entertained a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda, uh, minus item E, which has already been approved.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before.
Oh, I didn't see the hand.
That's all right. When I look at, um, well, there's no page number, but it's the open bid, um, which shows that Santos Ford was one-twenty-seven, three-fourteen and change, but on the body of the, um, agenda item, it says third, uh, one hundred and thirteen, six-ninety-three and change. Was there a transference of figures there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. We did, we did issue a correction for that. The, those first, the, the top two in the bid opening were transposed. They were switched from one to the other. So, so the staff report was correct. But when, when, uh, when we did the bid opening, we transposed those two numbers on top.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Mayor, council member Lambert, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D as read.
And F?
And F. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Uh, do I have a second? Mr. Mayor Yamas, I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion by council member Lambert and a second by council member Yamas to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and F. Vote, call vote, Ms. Lu, uh, Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lomis?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Consent agenda has been approved. We will now move on to item eight. Consideration of approval of city council resolution number six-four-one-one to commit additional funding to the police station facilities project. For that, we have, uh, two directors. We have Finance Director Williams and Police Chief Breezy this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, in October of two thousand and twenty, the city council committed ten million dollars in funding for a new police station. At that time, the council also approved a fourteen million dollar loan from IBC. The total estimated project cost to build the police station was twenty-four million. Of this twenty-four million, eighteen point five million was estimated to include all costs to design and build a new police station. During the RFP process, the city received two different proposals from design-built companies. Both of the proposals came in over budget and both companies proposed cuts to try to meet the cost requirements. Roe Lynn reported a base construction cost of twenty-three million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand. They proposed cuts of just over three point five million, which brought their adjusted base of the project to approximately twenty million dollars. However, the proposed cut significant, significantly cut the project resulting in, um, the construction of three separate buildings. It also lacked adequate square footage. It did not include all the necessary functions. In fact, it lacked office space for the commanders and the police service managers. And it also did not provide enough space for existing, uh, code enforcement, code enforcement officers or code enforcement records clerks. Um, ultimately, their cuts excluded them from meeting the RFP requirements. The secondary response was from Swinerton. Um, they responded with a base construction cost of twenty-three million, nine hundred and forty-seven, thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. They also provided a very, of, variety of cuts, but they did it in a little bit of a different manner, by breaking them into several different categories that allowed staff to choose what were actually viable cuts. Ultimately, the city was able to select changes and cuts to the, the conceptual design of the building itself for a savings over just, um, one point seven million dollars. The cuts would enable the city to bring down the cost of the project without changing the efficiency and the overall need of the department. With those cuts, the adjusted cost of the project would be twenty-two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. So the obvious reasons for the cost escalation is due to COVID impacts on the labor market, the supply chain and inflation. The nation and the state continue to experience significant supply chain issues. Obviously, there's delivery delays and, uh, those are the main drivers of the escalated costs. However, there has also been an overall reduction in the number of construction firms, uh, throughout the nation and an increase in the construction work. So there's an increase in work and less people to do it and a shortage of skilled labor. Because of these cost escalations, staff worked with veneer to identify if any adjustments can be made to the budget. And if so, um, how much would this reduce the cost by? And as previously, as previously mentioned, when reviewing the Swinerton bid, staff identified the variety of cuts made to the conceptual design, um, which reduced the budget by just over one point seven million. The reduction would decrease Swinerton's original bid from twenty-three point nine million to twenty, I'm, or their adjusted bid, sorry, from twenty-three point nine million to twenty-two point one million, which leaves the city with a budget shortfall of just over two point six million. Because council has fully committed to the project and that the additional funding is available throughout the different funds that we've used in the past, we are asking council to commit an additional funding in the following ways. One million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand from Measure P. Um, this will leave, if this money is committed tonight, this will leave approximately nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars as a fund balance in, at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, so at the end of this fiscal year, which leaves us enough cushion, um, to pay the necessary bills that we have if anything goes over budget. Additionally, we're asking for five hundred thousand from impact fees, which will leave the fund balance at approximately twenty-two thousand dollars at the end of the year. However, impact fees, this is exactly what this account is for. It's just to build projects. We can't do, uh, repairs and maintenance with this account. It is here, uh, solely for the purpose of capital. And then finally, we are asking for an additional one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the general fund, which will leave an estimated unrestricted fund balance of approximately sixteen million at the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the difference of three hundred and thirty-five dollars from the two point six shortfall to the three million that we are asking for will be used as a contingency fund in case anything comes over. And then any remaining funny, funding will be returned to the original source. And of course, the city will first, um, use Measure P funding, impact fees before, um, utilizing the additional. And of course, the city will first um use measure P funding impact fees before um utilizing the additional general fund sourcing. So staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution approving additional funding for the police station facilities project. And thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And this is for the the designs that we were shown, the renderings we were shown the last time this came to council. That's correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. I'll go through council, get comment and questions. Mr. Jones?
You know, I want to thank uh our police chief Gary Breezy and our finance director for working so hard on uh figuring this out. This has been probably our top priority is getting this police station built. And uh personally, I'm not going to let this stop just over three uh it was three million dollars. Is that correct? This one. And and the problem is, is that if we cut this out, it's going to get probably about five times as expensive in the future to add this back in. So the way that I see this is we don't have time to waste. We have to get this going. We have to get this approved and move forward. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just gonna uh agree with exactly what council member Jones just said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Ms. Lewis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I I'd like to add in not only um Sonia and our chief of police, but also our city manager Josh Panero for helping move this forward. Um one thing I want to get clarified in my mind, um Sonia, so does this bring us back up to the original size of the building uh that the police department wanted so that we can house all of our employees?
Yes, all of our employees will be housed in in this building. It will not make us have to.
It will not be a modified cut down size.
That's correct.
Okay, that's good. All right, I I'm I'm very happy about this and I'm looking forward to moving this uh forward for our police department and its personnel um as quickly as possible. We we need to expedite this. So thank you, everyone, for uh moving on and and making this possible for our Los Angeles Police Department as well as our citizens in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Uh Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I had one question. I'm not sure if uh Mrs. Williams covered it. I noticed in the staff report that uh some of the reasons uh impact or the increases was due to COVID. Can any of the COVID money that we've received be used to offset some of these additional or increases?
So there is actually a possibility that we can use ARPA funding. Um but because we don't meet the the requirements to reimburse our revenue, which we haven't talked about yet, uh or we've talked about briefly, the areas that we would be able to use the ARPA funding would be restricted to um basically the HVAC system and the jail, which is something that we could further talk about in the ARPA workshop, which might give us the ability to take some of these committed fundings and offset them with ARPA.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Well, all I have to say, it's about time. Um I'm very pleased to see us moving forward. I know Chief Breezy, uh Chief Breezy and I, when we first brought that about the courthouse over there, got that new courthouse built, we saw right away the potential for a police station next door, coordinated services. And now this whole vision is coming to fruition thanks to our our council's continued uh movement and progress. So I totally support this as well. Cheryl entertain a motion to approve city council resolution number sixty four eleven.
Mayor, council member Jones here. Like to approve city council resolution number six, four, one, one as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor Yamas, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by council member Jones, second by council member Yamas to approve city council resolution number six, four, one, one as read. Ms. Maloney roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Horia?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Great work. Great work. Fulfilling needs that have been sitting a long time. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item nine. Consideration of approval of city council resolution number six, four, one, two, adopting a street naming policy. And we'll go to community and economic development director Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Um I do have a PowerPoint presentation for this item. All right, we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so just a little bit of background on this particular item. Um so the city right now does not have an adopted formal written street naming policy. Um and on July seventh, the city council directed staff to develop a street naming policy that would establish a review process, develop naming criteria, and provide for a commemorative street names process. Next slide. Um I within this uh staff report, this presentation, I'm just going to cover some key components. Um so within the policy, the proposed policy, um first is just a general overall policy that establishes street names within a logical system. Um these would be names that are pleasant sounding. They would need to be easy to spell and pronounce. Uh they cannot be confusing and they need to maintain an area's character. And this would be administered uh by the community and economic development director. Next slide. Uh the provisions of uh this policy would start with the general guidelines. Uh this would give the community and economic development director with consultation with the police and fire chief uh to have final authority to approve street names. Within the policy, uh the city council would have the final authority to designate commemorative street names. And then, under extraordinary circumstances, the city council may with a super majority vote that would require four affirmative votes from the city council um to rename an existing street. It the city council would have that final authority. So that's all provided within this particular policy. Uh the street naming, um some of the requirements are that um it would need to recognize natural features related to Los Angeles. The street names would need to recognize a person or organization that have made a lasting and significant contribution to the betterment of the city of Los Angeles. Or the street names would need to be uh to recognize notable or historically significant people or events. Um and then the names um with would need to have um the same theme. That is also another criteria for the street naming. Uh so if it's for a large subdivision of a hundred and one units or more, it would need to have, it would provide for a single category. Um and that would be a theme that would be used throughout the large subdivision. If it's a smaller subdivision, that would be for a hundred units or less. Um the developer could consider street names that link or relate to adjacent development. Uh also, within the policy, there's to be no discriminatory or derogatory names used. Street names will not contain more than ten letter characters. Uh suffixes will be descriptive of streets physical configuration. So for example, an arterial would um have a suffix. So an ending of the street name, such as a boulevard or a road. So depending on the street type, it would have a particular ending um like way, lane, trail, depending on what type of street it is. Continuous streets would have the same name throughout. Uh an example of this that we currently have in 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 Los Angeles now would be Seventh Street. Um and as you continue north, it turns into um Stonewood. And that creates confusion uh not only for public safety, but for our citizens in general. Um another criteria is that compound names with similar beginnings would not be allowed to intersect. An example would be farm land and farmstead. You wouldn't have um those two streets intersect. Um that creates confusion, especially for public safety and dispatch. And then street names should relate to scale and location. And the reason for that is that um having a long name for, say, a short court creates mapping issues. So an example of that could be using turquoise, the street name turquoise on a cork. That's a very long street name that you're trying to put on a very short amount of length on a map. Uh what would be more appropriate is a shorter name like opal or ruby. Um so uh those are some of the guidelines, those general guidelines um that we've provided within the provisions of this particular policy. The process and procedures, the names would be proposed by developers uh within the criteria established and reviewed by the community and economic development director. And then after consultation with both the police and fire chief, uh the community and economic development of but director would approve. And then the street names would then be adopted with a final map recording. Next slide. So street renaming would only be allowed under extraordinary circumstances with a super majority affirmative vote of at least four city council members. Um so this would be taking a um already existing legal street name and giving it a new name. This would need to be initiated by petition in support of the name changed, signed by sixty percent of the property owners of the street. It would first be reviewed and recommended by the planning commission and then ultimately approved by the city council. If it's inhabited or occupied by by it's an occupied street, it would require a public hearing with the city council. And if it's uninhabited and unoccupied, it would not require a public hearing, but it would uh still need to meet the criteria established and require ultimately city council approval. Next slide. Uh next is commemorative street names in that category. This is in addition to the street name and would not legally change the street address. The selection criteria would be to recognize natural features related to the Los Angeles community or recognize a person or organization that has made a lasting and significant contribution to the betterment of the city of Los Angeles or recognize a significant historical event or individual. The process um and procedure of commemorative street names would be ultimately approved by the city council. It could be brought forward by a citizen group entity or organization. Um and who whatever entity brings that proposal forward would also uh need to accept the financial responsibility for that sign and installation. And then the public works department uh would supervise or coordinate the procurement and installation of that signage. Next slide. So under the environmental analysis, uh this would not be subject to CEQA per section one, five, zero, six, one, B, three. And CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act in that there's no possibility of significant adverse effects as a result of the proposal, given that it has no potential for resulting in physical change in the environment directly or indirectly, nor does it permit or authorize new or increased intensity of uses. Next slide. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number six, four, one, two, establishing a street naming policy for the city of Los Angeles. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. I'll go through council for question and comment. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick question. Um Stacy indicated in your presentation, um the slideshow that if um the commemorative naming of a street is to be changed, that whatever organization or group brought it forward would have to pay for the cost of that. Um if the city decides that it wants to do a commemorative change, um I assume the process would be the same, but the city just, you know, eats the financial burden of that.
Right, the city would absorb the cost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question that uh am I correct that uh in the presentation that the developers would be the ones naming the streets? Is that correct?
Yes, so with new subdivisions, the developer would propose street names in accordance with our criteria. Um and then that would be um approved by staff in consultation with the police chief and fire chief.
Okay, uh it seems to take away from some of the intent uh when this policy was proposed. The intent was that the naming would start with the city uh so that it would again uh have more of a local uh citizen oversight to it instead of a dictated from the developers. Is that not the the intent that was received by staff?
Um I think we we are proposing that within the criteria. Uh the criteria is pretty specific that it has to uh relate to the city of Los Angeles. Um but for for staff to create and spend time naming each street within the city, um staff feels it is much more efficient to have the developer develop that theme and and consistently within that criteria, carry out that theme throughout their subdivision. Um and then staff can check to make sure that that is correct. But um it it would not be efficient for staff time to sit and think of all of the street names. Um it would be much more efficient for the developer to propose and then staff to critique whether that meets our criteria.
Okay, would it be uh take too much time from staff to uh decide on the theme for each development and then have the developer name each street?
Sure, we can establish that definitely. We would work with that developer to establish that theme absolutely. Um and we do that now um within the subdivisions, and that's definitely something that we would carry forward. Provide advice and counsel on on what those themes should be.
Very well. Thank you very much, Director. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Sounds like you covered all the bases on this uh on this policy, covered a lot of ground, spent a lot of time and make sure that um all potential avenues, pardon the pun, uh were were pursued. Uh and yes, I'm I'm sure that as developments come forward, council will have conversations with staff and staff can have conversations with developers and we can end up in some in very good places, all within the guidelines that we're establishing. We proposed to establish here tonight um with an act of council. So Cheryl entertain a motion to approve city council resolution uh resolution number six, four, one, two.
Mr. Mayor, council member Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number six, four, one, two as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Eric, council member Lambert, second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by council member Lambert to approve city council resolution six, four, one, two as named. Ms. Maloney roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Mr. Yamas?
Yes.
Horia?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you for all the hard work on that project as well, staff. Now we'll move on to item ten, consideration of approval to solicit applications for the measure V citizens oversight committee and appointment for the mayor and the mayor portem to sit on the committee to review, interview, and recommend appointment to the city council at the December first, two thousand twenty one city council meeting. Ms. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Due to the recent resignation of city representative um committee member John Gates, the city would like to solicit applications and recommend candidates for the measure V oversight committee. So staff is asking for authorization to run advertisements in the Los Angeles enterprise, post on the city's website and social media to solicit applications for the measure V citizens oversight committee. And then we're we're also asking, as in past practice, for the mayor and mayor portem to review, interview, and recommend appointment to the city council at the December first. to review, interview, and recommend appointment to the city council at the December first, two thousand twenty one city council meeting. And we will then forward that recommendation to M C A G for them to formally appoint the new person.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. If there's no comment or question on this item, Cheryl will entertain a motion right away.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis?
Okay.
I'd like to make, thank you, a motion to approve the Measure V Committee outline as read by title on our agenda and to be, have someone interviewed and approved by December first to be submitted to M C A G.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And I think Mr. Lambert was chiming in, so.
I'll second that.
Second. Very good. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lambert to approve the consideration of approvals, applications for the Measure V Committee as read. Ms. Maloney, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. And we thank Mr. Gates for his service on that committee. Moving to item eleven, notice and announcement of vacancies for the following cities and commissions and committees. City Clerk Maloney?
Airport Advisory Commission has two vacancies and they both expire on December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Economic Development Advisory Commission will have three vacancies and they expire on December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Parks and Recreation Commission will have two vacancies and the two-year terms will expire on December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. The Tree Commission will have three vacancies and the two-year terms expire December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. The Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee will have four vacancies. There are two unexpired terms that we have been unable to fill the past year. And those two unexpired terms expire December thirty first, two thousand twenty two. And then we have two other two-year terms that will expire December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. And then the Measure P Committee will have two vacancies. There are two three-year terms expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. And I just wanted to make note that there will be no planning commission vacancies because of how the terms expire out. They don't expire this year. So we won't be looking to fill any planning commission vacancies. So there's no action to be taken. This is just an informational item only. The city clerk's office will advertise the vacancies and go through that policy set in place.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. So everybody listening and watching, your chance to get involved in helping the city make decisions. And some of these cases, some big decisions, influence the direction of your city. So look on the city's website and apply and get involved. All right. Item twelve, advisement of public notices. We have three reports tonight. And for those, we go to Community and Economic Development Director Elms.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. So the first item is pretty exciting. This is for a conditional use permit and a site plan for Merced School Employees Federal Credit Union. They have purchased land at the southeast corner of Scripps and Mercy Springs Road and will be building a brand new facility. It'll be over sixty-two hundred square feet with three drive-through lanes. So we're really excited. The architecture is gorgeous. It's agrarian, which is agricultural. But they were able to tie and really provide for a design that's harmonious to Las Vegas and represents our community. So it does not look like a financial institute. It looks like a building that belongs on Mercy Springs in Las Vegas. So we're really excited about that item. The next item is a mobile food vendor permit. This would be located at nine three one East Pacheco Boulevard, which is the Plaza Inn. This would be for Fidel Castaneda Oliveras doing business as Ranch Tacos. And then the last item is for a cottage food operation. This would allow for Tiffany Martinez to prepare prepackaged foods within her home in accordance with state California Department of Public Health and Merced County health requirements. And she is located at two two six San Bruno Street. These public hearings will be held virtually on Zoom on Wednesday, October twenty seventh, starting at six P M. And the link to that meeting will be posted on the Planning Commission's agenda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to our City Manager Report, Mr. Penaro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to give a brief thank you to Darryl Brad Argano. Thank you, folks, so much for your service. We really appreciate it very much. Brad, you may not remember, but I remember as a young man, senior around town, helping out and doing things with the fire department. So thank you, folks, so much. Sir Optimus Group, thank you so much, folks, for what you have done for us and your organization. Also like to just give a very big thank you to Gary Breezy and his staff for all the hard work they have put into this police station and getting it done. Very proud of you, folks. So great job on that. I thank you to Sonia for all your hard work and the coordination and managing of the finances. Thank you, folks, very much for all your hard work. And to council, thank you, folks, for everything, for working with the team, the staff. I'm getting this passed. I think this is a very, very exciting moment for us as a city, for us as a community. This is, I'm very privileged and humbled to be a part of this. And so let's keep up the great work. And once again, folks, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. And for those that I did not mention that had a pivotal moment in this and helping this come to fruition, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penaro. My report, Merced County Association of Governments, we had our city-county dinner last week, first one we've had in a long time. Got a chance to meet and talk and, and we learned all, we learned about the fact that the Castle Air Force Base is now being used for automobile testing, very high high technology involved there. There are a number of professional positions that they are hiring. So people can look to that. It's not far. It's not a far commute. And keep an eye on that. It's T R. Forgot, is it T R S? I've got the second name of the company. It's over there. So they, that was our guest speaker for that. Peninsula Clean Energy, we finally now have once in place our community outreach specialist. And that is Las Vegas's own Sandra Benetti. So she will be taking that position. She will be leaving her city position and she will be the liaison for Peninsula Clean Energy and the citizens of Las Vegas and various businesses so that we can make those connections, bring those revenues to town, make the connection and take advantage of everything that that relationship has to offer. Measure V Committee, Ms. Lewis attended for me last week. I had a, I had a choir festival I could not be gone from. But Ms. Lewis as our pro temp sat and I understand that I was voted to be a vice president of the Measure V, Measure V Committee now for the future. So thank you, Ms. Lewis, for, for sitting on that for me and for helping me obtain that position. We will now move to our city council member reports and we will start with Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, congratulations to Mrs. Menetti. Thank you for your years of service, dedication to the city of Las Vegas and the citizens. I want to thank you personally for your assistance while I was in the planning commission. And again, well, I guess we'll see you, you'll be around. But again, congratulations on your new appointment. And I want to thank the retiring department, thank them for their years of service, decades of service to the city and its residents. I want to thank everyone departments for the products presented today. I know it was a lot of footwork, a lot of long hours, a lot of crunching numbers, but I do appreciate it. It's a very significant event, passing this and moving this police station project forward. So again, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody up there for their hard work. I know we ask for a lot and they get it to us and I want to appreciate all that. And also thank Sandra Benetti for her tenure here at the city of Las Vegas and we will see her again. I also want to let everyone know, this last weekend, I guess we had this MMA fighting here at our fairgrounds. Strike Force and another promoter put it on, but I was handed a donation from Strike Force for a hundred dollars, hundred dollars, a hundred and seven dollars for the donation for the dog park from Strike Force. I also want to mention this, too. We're having this fall party in the park, which is in my district over here at the dog park. There will be a dog park ribbon cutting during that day and it starts at one o'clock. So I just want to let everybody else know about that. I'll give, I'll be there and I'll let everyone know that about the little donation that helps out for the dog park also. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also would like to thank Sandra Benetti for her years of service, fifteen long years of service to the city of Las Vegas, a very good employee. She worked in her last stand in our economic development department and was the clerk for the planning commission. And I'm sure Stacy is definitely going to miss her. Just a wonderful lady. And I personally will miss her, but I know that we will still be working with her through the Peninsula Clean Energy Program. Along with Councilmember Lambert, at this weekend's ribbon cutting for the dog park, there will also be a continual, continuing fall party in the park where our Las Vegas Parks and Recreation Department will be sponsoring pumpkin painting and fun games, bounce house food and a myriad of other things. So just love to have our community come out and enjoy this free event sponsored by the city of Las Vegas and Young's Air Conditioning, All American and Central Cal Air. And there's probably a couple of other ones on here that are too small for me to read. But this dog park has been a long time coming. It's something that we had a community outcry for and we've been working with our staff to move this forward. And I'm extremely happy. I think it's something that our, our community members have been using this summer and have been enjoying. So I'm very proud of the dog park and I hope that at some point we can have one on the southwest side of town as well. So it's more convenient for people who live in that area to come over. My, I have one other announcement I'd like to make and I understand it's been put up on our city Facebook page. And this is sponsored by the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. And on October thirtieth, which is the following Saturday, from eight A M. to twelve P M., the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District will be sponsoring a free smog repair event. And if you're having trouble passing smog on your registered vehicle, you can get up to a five hundred dollar voucher for repairs to your car. This, these repairs are for our residents here in Las Vegas who fail emissions tests and you'll receive a voucher to take to a repair service site. So please be sure to come out and if you need help with your vehicle, there's some money there to help you. And that they also like to want, want to let the public know that there may be a two-hour wait because I'm sure there'll be quite a few people coming out to receive help for this. So I'm, I'm happy to announce that we're finally getting some assistance over here in, in Merced County and especially here in Las Vegas by this state organization. The money's out there and certainly I would like to see our citizens take advantage of it who need the help to do stuff. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. And the dog park's going to be very exciting. The opening, the big event, lots going on there. We thank Mr. Heim and his team there for putting on that, all these cool recreation activities. Notice tonight, we are wearing our T-shirts. We have both the fire department and the police department have come up with breast cancer awareness T-shirts for October. I've got my fire department on. I'm waiting for my police on the second order to come in, so I can wear that one soon. And we thank our public safety first responders for being out there protecting, protecting people and promoting these, these excellent causes. Congratulations on the MMA, W W E, Rikishi, the famous fighter was there. I got to meet him. And that event was the product of the fact that I happen, I've been, I've been a neighbor of the Strike Fit people for many, many years. And they came to me with this idea. They asked us, we met with Ms. Elms, see what the city had some facilities. None of our facilities quite fit. So what about the school district? Those didn't quite fit. But then we said, well, there's the fairgrounds. And so we directed them to the fairgrounds and through the fair staff and board and our supervisor that came to fruition. The house was packed and it was very exciting. Nice to see these events coming to Las Vegas. So I'm very pleased to see that. All right. Finally, today is my granddaughter's birthday. So happy birthday, Abby. We wish you a very happy birthday. Now we go to closed session. And for our closed session today, we have conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representatives, city manager Penaro, city attorney Vaughn, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, legal counsel Bolanos, employee organizations, Las Vegas Police Officers Association, and unrepresented miscellaneous employees. And we will report out after the meeting and we will do our adjournment at that time. Thank you for joining us tonight. All right, everyone. We have returned from closed session and we have no reportable action. And with that, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Fair, I'll second.
And Mr. Lambert. So I have a motion by Mayor Pro temp Lewis, second by Councilmember Lambert to adjourn. And I will take the roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Yamas?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Meeting adjourned at eight oh two P M. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a great night. Bye.